Good evening. I'd like to call to order this December meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. And we'll begin tonight by just going around and introducing ourselves. And if you'd care to share something you're reading, please feel free to do so. So Kari, how about we start with you?
My name is Kari Essery, and I am about to finish a kind of detective mystery book called Fox Creek. I can't remember the author.
I am Greer Carson, and I just started Ten Patterns That Explain the Universe by Brian Clegg.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I'm still working on Grave Books by J.A. White.
I'm Jamie Burkhart, and I am reading a lot of nonfiction AWS White papers, studying for a certification exam.
And Nichelle Wash, I just finished Hood Feminism and downloaded a new audiobook today, The Rage of Innocence.
All right. Well, we'll begin tonight with our consent agenda items. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 16th board meeting, the minutes of the December 7th executive session, the monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, the personnel report, and the board meeting calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any questions or concerns about any of the consent agenda items?
I just saw a number that was kind of large on page 58. It was, all it says is proper, and it looks like it's $7 million. Fifty-eight. Sorry, everybody's.
We're all digging it.
And maybe I'm misreading it, but I thought it was.
It's number R100-005-00100, proper.
Seven million, fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars.
That just seems out of the ordinary, and I just kind of look for patterns.
I will have to look at that before and see where that came from. It looks like a budget number, but...
Yeah. So anyway, it might just be a whatever.
And it's right before a negative eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty.
So, thank you. It just, yeah, I look for patterns as I...
Good question.
Two million after that one.
And then two million, eight hundred thousand.
Yep, yep, yep. So anyway, thank you.
All right. Yeah, we'll confirm what that is.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That was it.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll turn to Greer for the director's monthly report.
So as always, I'd like to share a few highlights very quickly. The baking kits launched in November. This collection of things, part of our Library of Things collection, was the winning proposal for this year's Library Innovation Grant, or what we used to call the Pioneer Grant. Our team behind the collection will be sharing some information and community feedback and some anecdotal experiences with you all at an early 2023 board meeting, but we're glad that that's out there now. We are now partnering with the Indiana Bar Foundation to provide a self-service legal help kiosk here at the downtown library. It's actually on the second floor, right as you get up the stairs and turn to the right. Focuses on providing resources and documents supporting those facing housing instability, but there will be updates to the machine and its system in the near future. We are one of the first organizations in Indiana to provide this for our community, and Indiana is actually one of the few states in the nation doing it. As usual, we have some heartwarming experiences in quotes from our Vital patrons, and because I know there was a question last month regarding the number of vital volunteers in our waitlist, we touched base with our Vital team and got some responses to that question. So we actually don't have a lack of volunteers for Vital at the moment. Rather, we're in the middle of rebuilding the Vital volunteer infrastructure, specifically administrative systems in our training program. And this is to be more effectively meeting the needs of the adults, learning English as a new language, and adults with literacy challenges. And this has a necessary impact on our waitlist right now. We're adapting to the emerging needs of the populations. We're working to build training programs that address the current priorities of digital literacy skills and English for beginner and prebeginner learners. And we're working closely with the Bloomington and Indianapolis-based Exodus Education staff. Our partnership with Broadview Learning Center continues to thrive, and we're exploring revisiting the advocacy council previously in place, and this was pre-COVID, which is a quarterly meeting of local adult education representatives in order to discuss opportunities and needs and resources. And the groundwork for all of this will be in January. As we're rebuilding our volunteer corps for tutoring and the programs which manage it, we are also providing supplemental learning opportunities in the form of literacy kits and promoting self-paced resources. And as always, the Vital e-learning library link on our website is an excellent place for people to start who want to learn and practice at home, even if they're on our waitlist. So thank you for that good question. We are adding a new outreach van stop starting in January. This is for the new Autumn Park Senior Living Facility on the west side of Elletsville. Teen Services conducted a great historical fiction assignment with our friends at the project school. Those are my highlights. Happy to answer any questions.
I just think it's noteworthy. We're having medical things here, we're having legal things here. I mean, this is an all-service point.
That's right. Yeah. Sort of like the journey of the 21st century public library is to figure out what is it that we can do that we're not doing, and does it fit within our workflow somehow? And if it does, we try to pursue it, so, yeah.
Anything else for Greer? All right. We'll move on to our old business, and the first is an update on the Southwest Branch from Greer.
Okay. The drywall is up throughout the building. Now, the finishing for the drywall will begin next week, but as you walk into the building, you can actually see the rooms taking shape. It's very exciting. Furniture has been ordered. Shelving is soon to be ordered, and our opening day collection delivery dates are being set this week. We're probably expecting those boxes of books and everything else the very beginning of April. Electrical, water, and gas installation is still in progress on the site. There's been a little confusion out there in our community as to what aspect of the Gordon Pike disruption is directly connected to our branch construction project versus the county's Gordon Pike expansion project. I've had some good conversations with our soon-to-be neighbors on Gordon Pike and the surrounding neighborhoods, and we've also reached out to local media to clarify some of this. But it's understandable that when you have two big projects like this coinciding, that people are going to assume it's all part of one big deal, and if somebody steps on your property and cuts down a tree, it's because the library's building a branch, which is not quite true. So it's a good, it's a good community outreach opportunity there. We will be posting for Southwest Branch library positions beginning in January with the branch manager position, followed by the other positions probably in February. And we are hoping to schedule some VIP tours for our staff, for you all on the board, for our friends at the library board members, and others in February. That seems to be a good time to get everybody out there and see what the building is pretty much going to look like. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, I will say, I'm very excited to get inside and see what it's looking like. I'm eager for it to open, so it's exciting. Okay. We have nothing else for Greer. Then next we'll hear a budget, the DLGF budget update from Gary. And hopefully he'll remind us what DLGF stands for.
Department of Local Government Finance.
Yes. So the Department of Local Government Finance will not allow us to make a final budget adjustment of $1,800, and they are rejecting the budget we submitted for 2023. So changes will be made to the library budget worksheets going forward so that adjustments made by the DLGF after the budget is adopted are included in the maximum budget spending calculation. I've looked at how the penalty on the tax levy will impact the library. Now that we know what the total operating spending is for the first 11 months of 2022, we can project the estimated operating fund surplus for 2022. For 2022, I'm projecting an operating surplus of at least $800,000. The 2022 operating surplus will cover the budget penalty, and we will have surplus funds remaining that can be added to the rainy day fund. The estimate for the addition to the rainy day fund is about $280,000, which can serve as cushion during the completion of the branch construction project. The DLGF decision to reject the 2023 budget will not impact operational plans for 2023 related to completing and staffing the new branch, and it will not reduce any other planned library services. For the long term, how will it impact the library? When we do the calculation for the 2024 maximum levy for the library, the starting point will be the normal maximum levy for 2023 rather than the lower amount based on the previous year levy. So looking at 2024, if we assume that the growth quotient for 2024 is 4%, it would mean the revenue from the operating fund tax levy would increase by $814,000 from 2023 to 2024. So we will need to do an additional appropriation in early 2022 in order to increase the spending budget from the 2022 levels to the 2023 levels. We'll also be doing an additional appropriation at the same time so that we can get approval to spend the funds that we have carried over for the completion of the branch project. Those funds are in the rainy day fund. So long term, we'll be looking at the next three years leading up to the renewal of the bond that will be paid off in 2027. We'll be looking at operating surplus funds that can be built up in that time, and we'll be looking at capacity for making future bond payments. And we'll be looking at options for future library service improvements. Any questions?
Was there a reason given why they turned it down?
Yes. Because the budget that we submitted, the maximum spending budget, the calculation I did was $1,800 over the increase that is allowed by the growth quotient. And so that is, that's the reason.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Gary. All right. We're going to move on to new business, and so we have several action items, which are just some end-of-the-year, start-of-the-new-year sort of things. And the first one is going to be the approval of the 2023 calendar of meetings. We have a motion to approve the calendar of meetings for 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And I believe Greer has an update on this before we...
Yeah. You've got a printed version of this that has a few minor updates I just want to point out. The first is, we are removing monthly work sessions from the calendar going forward. They've been in there for a few years. It's just sort of a default. We obviously use work sessions whenever we need to, so we're going to flip that, not build them into the calendar, and rather schedule the work sessions on an as-needed basis. But to kick the year off, we're having a work session on January 11th for a pretty obvious reason. So that is in the calendar in the updated version. The other thing I want to point out is that on September 20th, we have a public hearing for the 2024 budget and our usual monthly meeting, and those will occur in 2B and C, which is upstairs here at the downtown library. We have a conflict with this room, so that's not in the other version. Otherwise, everything else that you see in the packet is what we're planning for 2023.
And there will also likely be an executive session following the January 11th work session to finalize the director's salary for 2023. All right. Okay. All those in favor of approving the 2023 calendar of meetings for the library board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Okay. Next is the 2023 schedule of holiday closings. Do we have a motion to approve those holiday closings?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion about that? It looks like it's pretty much the same as last year.
Correct. I do have a question. How are the days chosen for when you all close?
You mean outside of just this discussion here? And we do this every year in December. We can kind of move things around if we want to, in terms of Staff Day or anything like that. Holidays, though, federal holidays, is the thing that we want to talk more about among staff. There's some ideas we have for adopting a new closed holiday, and whether or not that means swapping with an existing one or simply adding it to our list. It's a bigger conversation we'd like to have internally before we propose that, so we're holding off on that one for next year. But these have been kind of in place for quite a while. We tend to just carry them over from year after year.
Okay. It's good to know that you all are having internal conversations, because I know with Juneteenth now being a federally recognized holiday, people are having to decide how do they recognize that as companies and organizations.
That is the very thing that we need to talk about.
Yeah. Okay. Good stuff.
Because, you know, it would be simple enough to say, you know, it's been a federal holiday for, you know, since, what, '21? So let's adopt that. But then the question becomes, do we just add another closed day because we believe that we should have that day off? Or do we swap it with something else? When you start talking about swapping it with something else, then everybody's got a lot of opinions. So we need to have a broader conversation about that before we propose a change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
It also becomes just a great opportunity, having part of that conversation for programming. So, I mean, something that you have to weigh.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 2023 schedule of holidays signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And next, we will look at the 2023 fee schedule. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023 fee schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do you have any questions or discussion on that, or anything, Greer, that you want to add?
No changes to the fee schedule for next year.
I have a question. This is just for my own FYI. The cost of replacing a lost item is the replacement cost per item.
Correct.
Does that, that is, so if the item is $10, that doesn't just mean it's $10, right? Like, we're taking into account if there is shipping or...
Or what we would call, like, processing fees, like, internal operational fees. We build those in as, like, general sums. It's not specific to the given item. It's sort of like, in general, for this type of item, it usually costs about this much. Build in some processing to that, and that's what we charge for replacement.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions, all those in favor of approving the 2023 fee schedule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we're going to move on to the agreement between MCPL and El Centro. Do we have a motion to approve the 2023 agreement between these two entities?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion, or anything that you need to add, Greer?
No changes, other than the dates, and we are very glad to continue to partner with El Centro and give them space here at the downtown library.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 2023 agreement between MCPL and El Centro signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next is the 2023 agreement between Katz and the town of Elletsville. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. And we have someone who's going to share some information with us?
Yeah. This is our regular yearly contract with the town of Elletsville. Nothing much has changed. It has a 1% increase in the things, which we're, we're actually really happy about. It's been a tough year for everybody, just a couple of years, so, yeah, it's all good.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you. All those in favor of approving the 2023 agreement between Katz and the town of Elletsville signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Okay. Next is the 2023 agreement between Katz and Monroe County. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. And anything about this?
Same thing.
Okay.
That's it. It's, it is another 1% increase, and we are picking up an extra one, maybe two extra meetings for them coming in the next year. And that's, that's it. It's all good.
And you're happy with that?
Yeah, yeah, we are. As I said, we know it's been, you know, it's been a tough few years, and everybody's were, you know, we looked at our budget, and we think we can handle it. We've made some changes in our structure that we think will actually help cover all those, all those costs. So we feel pretty good about it.
I have a question about how it's written. Is this a typo, or am I just not familiar with this script? So like, section six, nondiscrimin, I think it's supposed to say nondiscrimination, but it has 6ON on that? And also the same thing down for...
It's in a few places, yeah. Where six replaces T.
Yeah. TI.
Yeah.
It's only in the headers, not in the subtext.
So for something like this, do we need to have a motion to amend, or is it just no big deal?
I'm looking over at Tom for that one.
Okay.
It's still binding, is really what we're concerned with, right? Yeah. Okay.
See, it's a big issue. It's the language, the heading. I should call it out.
Good catch, though.
So we're going to keep it at 6ON? Okay.
So across the board.
All right. Sounds good to me.
Yeah. Well... Oh, and very quickly, there are two other annual contracts we renew for Katz, one with the city and one with FHB, and they'll be coming our way in January, so we'll do those two then.
All those in favor of approving the 2023 agreement between Katz and Monroe County signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have the resolution to allow the board president to continue to sign documents in lieu of all the trustees signing them. We started this a couple of years ago because of COVID, just to cut down on the number of papers and things being passed around. So do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion?
So, point of clarification. In this, it says that beginning January 2023, the board will reevaluate the practice. Is that accurate? Are we reevaluating in January?
Beginning in January, meaning we can reevaluate it at any time. But it's already, it's, it's current now. It's already in place. So at any point, we want to review this and say, we're not going to do this anymore. We can do that.
Okay. Okay.
I understand what you're saying there, Nichelle. It does seem a little confusing. It says, be it further resolved that beginning in January 2023, we, the board, will reevaluate the practice of all members signing approved board documents. So we're going to just...
So...
I think you would want to say that January 2024.
Say '24? Okay. So we would do an approval with an amendment to change the '23 to '24?
I move that we change the date from January 2023 to January 2024.
Do you have a second? Okay.
I need to clarify, I have to ask clarifying questions. So technically, we're doing the reevaluation in December. So shouldn't this say, in December of 2023, we'll review?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
We're okay with that?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So vote down my first one, and then we'll make another one, because we've already put it out there.
Strike the motion.
December 2023 will be that second-to-last paragraph.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Good aye tonight.
Yeah. Got it. Feeling a little refreshed today.
So our motion is, do we have a motion to approve amending the MCPL resolution for board signatures on approved documents to say in the fourth paragraph, instead of January 2023, December of 2023? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do you have a second?
We're voting for December, correct?
December 2023. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of approving the amended MCPL resolution for board signatures on approved documents signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. All right. So we'll get that changed. And finally, we have the approval, a motion to approve the COVID leave policy. Do we have a motion to approve this policy?
So moved. Second.
Okay. And Kyle, you're going to give us a little bit of information on this?
We don't spot a typo in this one. It'll be ironic. This one is all kind of marked up. So Kyle's going to walk us through some of the changes, but in a nutshell, we're proposing to renew this and reset the accruals like we've done the last, I believe, two times.
It is a bit red, but I'm not going to go through that exactly. What I'm going to talk about is that the benefits remain the same. What we're doing here is just some administrative changes. So one of the things that came up for us the latter half of this year is that we can't discern the difference between COVID and the flu from afar. Nobody can do it even when they have it. They're like, I don't know if I've got flu or COVID. So we're going to clarify the use of COVID leave versus appropriate use of sick leave by asking staff members to confirm test results for us, so they can provide an update to HR using our online notification form within 48 hours of missing a shift. And normally, by then, they've done their test, and they know, am I positive or not? So that's what we're looking for, just to kind of help clarify, because that just adds more stress to people trying to figure out what's going on, and are we using those leaves appropriate? So that's what these changes are about. Just for a little comparison, in 2021, all of 2021, we had 432 hours of COVID leave. And January through June of 2022, last year, we had 843 hours of COVID leave. And then from July of this year to November, towards the end of November, because I took that at a, at a point in time, we used 1,495 hours of COVID leave. And that really matches what's been going on, because people are, we're not having as many people getting vaccinations. They're also not wearing masks the way we were. It's just much more casual. And then we get into that, is it COVID, is it flu? And so I'm not surprised by any of those numbers. People have been very respectful of it, and so we want to be able to extend that again to our staff, because the point is, stay home, stay safe, and take care of yourself, and don't share the joy with everybody else. So those are the reasons for our adjustments.
I have a question. If a person gets a false negative within that 48 hours, but then, like, maybe the next day, it comes back positive, are they going to be able to resubmit?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's the whole point. Hey, let's keep the communication going.
Okay.
What's happened is some people have turned in, say, hey, I think I have COVID. I don't know what's going on. And then the communication stops, and we're not sure. So we want to make sure we can update time cards to make sure we're using the appropriate leave. And so it's just more of a communication loop is what we're asking for.
Any other questions or discussion for Kyle?
I do have a question. Not against this at all, just curious. CDC has updated their guidelines, and it's not 10 days anymore. How did you choose to continue with 10 days?
So it's actually a total of 10 days, and we have had people that have needed that. So we, and, but for the, I'd want to say 85, 90% have been using five days. We've only had a few people that have actually used 10 days, and that's been more in the past. But we don't want to make that not available for somebody that truly needs it. It's, I'm usually talking to people that want to come back too soon.
Right.
And then point of clarification, the policy is written through December, oh, no, it says June. Okay.
Yeah, June. We'll look at it again in the, in the, in July.
Okay.
Or in June for July. Which is what we've been doing every six months since it started.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Kyle. All those in favor of approving the COVID leave policy renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. All right, and moving on, we'll be hearing from Martin O'Neill, our Katz manager, on an update from the Community Access Television Services, otherwise known as Katz.
Thank you all. I'll try and keep this brief. I guess I'll start by saying one of the major things that happened to us this year was our long-serving and well-respected leader for over the past 30 years retired, and it was, it was Michael White, and it was quite an upheaval, as you can imagine. So we, we did some soul searching with that, and we actually did some restructuring of our staff. So, so essentially, instead of replacing an entire managerial position, I was promoted into that position, but we, we had two assistant managers, myself and Adam Stillwell. So instead of having, hiring another assistant manager and that, we just eliminated a, a position. Adam took on a few more responsibilities. I took on more responsi... responsibilities as well as the managerial role. And that's how we sort of restructured things moving forward after the, you know, after Michael leaving. We like it, it's working pretty well, and the staff seemed to like it a lot. They liked the continuity of it and everything else, so everything's been there and been moving quite along. Just a little background about Katz because not a lot of people get to know a lot about our department. We actually have 15 people there. Eight production assistants, two of them are full-time, six of them are part-time. We have four master control operators who are all part-time people at 20 hours. And we have an equipment specialist of Rob and Adam, who's over here running audio tonight because it's a busy night. He's the assistant manager, and I'm the manager. We, we do a lot of stuff in the community. Most of it is government meetings these days, but we do do a lot of stuff that is very important in the community, community events. Martin Luther King Day, down at the State of the City address, African American Choral Ensemble, Chimes of Christmas, that sort of thing, and lots of stuff in between. So as you can imagine, I actually want to show you this little thing here because this kind of, this is kind of what the past couple of... Oh, missed it. See if this will play. This is kind of what we felt like in the past couple of years as we've tried to modernize and expand into our thing. It just felt, oh, God, you know? There you have it. So, so what we've done in 2022, this is kind of what we'll, what we'll run through here. So one of the big things is returning our personnel back. After COVID, pretty much everyone was doing Zoom meetings. So when 2021 happened into 2022, most of the stuff that we were covering, we were, our personnel were here and just recording Zoom meetings. So we're now finally getting into getting everybody back out into the field and into all those places where we couldn't go before. All government meetings now are now some sort of, some sort of a hybrid meeting. There's some Zoom element or other element and an in-person element. File management system, getting all that modernized, we're working on that. Archiving, digitization, and deep storage is always a problem with the modern world with everything digital. It used to be we had a tape and we just put it on the shelf. Now the world has changed, so we can't just do that anymore. And then there's the boring stuff about encoding processes, about how we encode stuff. We record a digital file in the field, and then we bring it back, but that digital file is far too big and of a different flavor and quality, and then we have to break it down into all different elements and make that happen. So this is just a long thing, it's just what I just said. But either, but the bottom line is even with the more complicated setups and productions, Katz has been able to continue with our coverage and actually increase the amount of meetings and public events that we're actually doing. So that's actually a great, a great win for us. This is a sort of chart. We've done this from 2019 to 2022. The blue is the 2019. So you can see the sort of trend there as it, as it went along. As we started in and into, getting into COVID in 2020 and then heading into 2022, our numbers went up quite considerably because we were able to cover more meetings than we used to because we were having just one person sitting at a desk recording a Zoom meeting, which, you know... And bizarrely, we find out that despite everything being in Zoom on those years, people were still relying on us quite a bit to record those meetings and play them back and have them in our archives. We were kind of a little surprised by that because we were thinking, well, everybody's just going to go to Zoom and that's that. But it actually hasn't turned out to be the case at all, which is, which is great. So people still rely on us for that, for that kind of coverage. Yeah, so it has teared up towards the end of the year, November. That's actually almost an understandable thing that happens every November because there's holidays starting there. Thanksgiving and all that sort of thing starts in there. So those, those numbers go down a bit. Okay, encoding process. So as we're saying before, it's, it's, and this is dry stuff, so I'll go over it as quick as I can. But essentially, when we, when we record a digital file in the field, it's a very large file. So when we take it back to the station, it has to be, we add like a little intro at the beginning and a tails at the end, and then we do nothing else to it. On the government stuff, nothing else gets touched. That's real important. So then, once it's there, it needs to be exported out of that, out of that, uh, he, uh, out of the Premier Pro is what we're using right now. But then we have to make file for different things. One file is for our archive file. We have to make a separate file for playing it back on the channels. And then there's another file for playback on the web. And they're all different. So that's one of the things that we've been struggling with. So we've actually started, this week, we've started a process where all our encoding that used to be done on local computers is now being done in the Clyde. So we figured out it's actually cheaper and faster to actually transfer our program up into the Clyde, have somebody who's got a bunch of servers and encoders encode it all and send it back to us. That's actually faster than us sitting and doing it ourselves, plus the fact we don't have to maintain everything, and it saves manpower and headaches and everything else. With those old encoders, we had to do them one at a time. One computer could do one meeting, one could do another one. With this Clyde stuff, we can, there's literally no limit to how many meetings we can have going at once. So if we record seven or eight meetings in an evening, seven or eight, those seven or eight meetings are all getting encoded at the same time. So they can be, get to, so theoretically, they can get to the web sooner. And if there's any issues, we can find them sooner and address them sooner. Yeah, so digitization and permanent storage is another big thing that we've been working on this for a very long time. We have a catalog of approximately 30,000 meetings, programs that we need to convert into a digital form. Part of the MOU with the city of Bloomington is that all the meetings that we've done are actually available on the web. So we're constantly working towards that. We started this year with using Amazon Glacier storage because we, even though we, we added in terabytes of storage, if there are something like 96, 97 terabytes of storage, local storage, it's not going to be enough moving forward. So we figured that Amazon Glacier was the cheapest way to do it. It actually cost us pennies to get them up there, and they go into very deep storage. The only time it will ever cost us money really is when we want to retrieve all those files. But those are therefore catastrophic. That's, you know, the library burned down and everything else burned down. That's where all our stuff is, and we can get it back. So again, the process was the files need to be onsite stored, Clyde stored, cable playback version, and a web version. And that, I mean, that's pretty much it. In a nutshell, in a very quick nutshell, that's kind of what we've been doing this year. So if there's any questions on any of that dry stuff or anything else, I'm happy to answer them.
Very impressive that you all have been able to do even more than pre-pandemic. That's great.
Thank you.
So, great work. And I'm excited to hear about this cloud thing that gets stuff to the web faster. That's great.
Yeah, it's great. We were actually, when we started running the numbers this week, we were kind of shocked ourselves at how quickly it was moving around. Normally, when we do an encoding, it's, it's almost in real time. If it's an hour and a half meeting, it takes about an hour and a half to encode. The latest tests that we've done, we're doing those in half an hour, so we're really cutting back on the time. And I will say that, thank you for saying that about all the extra stuff we're doing, but it would not be possible without the amazing people that we have working for us who really go above and beyond and make it happen. Well, I also mentioned too that all, all our stuff for the, for Monroe County is now on YouTube also. So we have a Katz YouTube channel where we're putting stuff to. And Mike over here is who's directing this, this evening. That's all him. He's been putting all those up there on the web or on YouTube, so he's been doing an amazing job. But thanks to everybody who's worked for us and who really puts in the time and effort to do things right.
And on that, Martin, would you very quickly just summarize what production assistants do and master control operators do? Since those are kind of unique titles at the library and may not be evident?
Yeah, they are. Production assistants are kind of like the videographers slash editors of what we do. They go out into the field and record everything. That could be as simple as just bringing one small camera and one microphone to an event, to having a multi-camera setup or remote camera setups as we have here. Could be manned cameras, and they direct the meetings, they record the meetings, they record audio, and they edit stuff too. So they're these, they're more than the worker bees, if you like. I mean, they do all the hard work and heavy, heavy lifting. But they also do a lot of, the recording of meetings here back at the, back at the station. Master controllers, they're, they're the ones who make sure that we're on the air. So their, one of their main jobs is they sit at the Katz front, front desk, they do answer phones, they do recordings of old meetings and programs that we need to get into the digital form. They record all those. And they also record live meetings back here at the station, and they put stuff on live so as it goes on, goes on the air live. But their, their main critical thing is they have crucial eyes and ears to make sure that, when they look up at the monitor, that we're still actually on the air, which is important. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Martin, for that presentation, and thank you to you and your staff for the valuable service you provide to the library and to the community.
Cheers, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've reached the point in our meeting for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to step forward and address the board? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, we're adjourned.